You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I'll order the August 10th of the Swansea Planning Board here at Wickham Hall. Begin with the roll call, Scott Sal.
Recording in progress.
That's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Selectmen's rep Ken Colby. Alternates Steve Malone.
Here.
Michael Stunge, alternate. Brian Bergel, alternate. And we have a full quorum there, so I won't be seeing Steve for anyone. So, you look puzzled. Like, I can't see ones...
You don't like me, what can I say?
You can't see someone for the selectmen's rep. So, the agenda this evening, we review the minutes and approve the minutes probably of July 27, 2023. And under applications, public hearings, there was, this one has been withdrawn by the request of the applicant, but that was PB 23-018, site modification for Norman Koch. Just a modification on behalf of MHC 247 LLC to add vehicle storage and packaging and supply sales to the approved site plan for the cell storage facility located at 439 West Swansea Road. So, they've withdrawn that one. So that brings us to discussions and other business. And item A would be Sean Voisin, Voicing, I think. 1042 West Swansea Road, multi-tenant application. Two 10s going in that one. Dan Lusier, that's 919 West Swansea Road, daily expansion of hours. And that one's already been approved, they're just coming for a modification there. Wetlands septic setback discussion with code enforcement officer Mike Jasmine. And zoning amendments discussion continued. And plan rating workshop, we aren't going to do that tonight, and any other business as may be required. So, coming up to the top here. We do have a couple of multi-tenants, so we might as well have a regional impact vote, whether it's, regionally impacts, you want or not.
I move that nothing. Nothing in the agenda requires a regional impact vote.
Okay. Motion by Michael York, that nothing on tonight's agenda requires us to notify other towns. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All ayes opposed? Okay, and then we'll do the minutes. I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of July 27, 2023. Motion by Richard Lane, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Victoria Ames, is there any further discussion on any changes to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
On page three, line two, where I mentioned, what I, what I thought I said was, what I intended was that owners of residential properties along State Route 32 might feel their property would be more valuable without new businesses. We were saying that businesses along there would make, somebody might not want to be called, you know, zoned residential, because they would feel if they had a business property, it would be more valuable. However, if they plan to live there and they have a residential property and plan to sell it as such, they might think that their property is more valuable as residential property without more businesses around it.
So the change would be that property, that some property owners might feel that their property would be more valuable, a zone as residence than a zone as business?
Right.
For that, with that cap?
The owners of residential properties might feel their property would be more valuable without new businesses. Yes.
Okay.
And zoned residential.
Well, that's different, though. Without new businesses means without new businesses cropping up around them, is that what you meant?
Right, right, that's what I meant.
Well, that pretty much says it there anyway.
And zoned residential, you want that in there too?
Oh yeah, that's not even right.
Scott put that in there, I don't care.
Oh no, that's what I thought you meant, I was just clarifying what you meant. Is that what you meant?
Well, I just...
Keeping their property zoned as residential?
Yes, I guess that's what we were talking about, right?
Yeah, we were, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any changes or any comments on that change? If not, Michael, you accept those changes for your motion? You made the motion, didn't you? Oh no, it was, it was Richard Lane's motion, sorry about that.
Yes, okay.
Accept the changes. Victoria, you seconded, right, accept the changes. Okay, all those in favor of the change, okay, of approving the changes of the July 27, 2023 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Then they're passed. Brings us to discussions, and that would be, first up would be Sean Voisin, 1042 West Swansea Road, a multi-tenant, there are two multi-tenants going in there. This is the old Tire Warehouse Building. Is that you?
That's me.
Okay. This is the old Tire Warehouse Building. And there are two tenants going to go into that building there, so it will become multi-tenant. It's not multi-tenant now, because it was just a warehouse in there. And we allow that at public hearings. This building has had site plan review before and approval, which that one has. We can go ahead and look at it for multi-tenant at a regular meeting. So, there are two multi-tenants going in there, so we can discuss them separately, and we can vote on this one, or we can split up and vote on those two. Either way, but we'll just go through them and discuss them separately and see where we're going to be on that. So, the first one is, let's see, it's a distribution. That's convenience store items, cigars, cigarettes, general merchandise, snacks, deli, you know, deli beverages, produce, frozen foods, things like that. And that's located within the pre-existing building. And their hours would be 2:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. They plan to have four full-time people working there. And no customers per day. They'll be using eight to 10 existing spaces there. The deliveries would be five days a week, Monday through Friday, by tractor-trailer and box truck. Outside lighting, no changes, special licenses, doesn't apply, don't need any, and no changes to the signs. So, other than what we see there, do you have anything to add for the multi-tenant?
Yeah, they have the one tractor trailer that comes in and unload it, and then they repackage it for the other truck for distribution.
Do they have their own tractor trailer, is that what it is? They have their own, I see.
Yeah, it comes from Barry or wherever they have to work.
And then, they have deliveries though, right? All these things are delivered there, and then they have their own tractor trailer coming to pick them up and distribute it?
No, the tractor trailer comes and delivers, they unload it, then they redistribute it into the smaller box trucks.
Oh, okay, that's the difference there, the small box trucks are coming up. How many box trucks, trucks?
Maybe like three.
Yeah. Let's see, are there any members of the board that have any questions on this?
Were you, when your statement, just recent statement, were you combining both?
No.
You're just saying the distribution part, right?
Yeah, I say we'll discuss them separately.
Right.
And we can combine them in a vote if we want to, but...
But what you were saying about produce, et cetera, et cetera, I see that that's not in here. Or I'm not seeing it anywhere. It looks like it's...
There are two separate applications. Just take a, look at, look at the application, the actual application, just go back. You can just use this one here. Go beyond the minutes in our packet. Oh yeah, you've got it right there, haven't you?
Yeah.
And this is the one for the distribution, it says distribution on it right there, that's the first one we're taking up.
By splitting it, I'm sorry. If it's going to be produce, et cetera, then they're going to have to have refrigeration. Is there, I don't see anything in here about that.
I would think so.
Yeah, their truck is one of those refrigerated trucks.
Yeah, but you're going to put it on a dock, and it's going to be out there for up to 12 hours?
No, they put it right in their refrigeration truck.
Will those engines be running 24/7 when the trucks are there?
They work, and because they're waiting for the refrigerators to come down, they're at their headquarters. I haven't been in a few days, so I'm not sure if they're installed yet.
Those are diesel trucks?
What's that?
Those are diesel trucks?
Correct.
There is federal guidelines on how long a diesel truck can run.
In other words, they're not supposed to idle, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I know it does, it's...
But some of these refrigerated trucks do have refrigeration where they don't use the diesel for it to run.
Oh yeah, I'm not sure if I...
They run off the battery.
I know it does cycle off and on, like when it reaches temperature or something, they all shut right now.
Well, we just got to be sure that they're not running their diesels, because you do have some neighbors in that area. And of course, there are federal laws, because I had a CDL. And there are federal laws on how long you can run a diesel, according to the temperature that you have at the time. In fact, like now, you could run it more than five minutes and it's supposed to shut off.
Well, as long as they're aware of that anyways, which is what brought attention to the problem. But there's been diesel trucks in and out of that property since we approved them, I mean, a lot of them.
I was just trying to make them aware of that.
Okay.
In case you got complaints or something from neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, if there's a complaint, yeah, the complaint to the town, then yeah, we code enforcement can address it right there.
Because you're talking about two levels of cold, right? There's produce cold, and then there's frozen foods cold, which is, you've got to hold that pretty cold.
Temples are zero, it's supposed to be.
And you can do that with trucks, just without having any kind of interior holding place?
Oh yeah, those refrigerators.
Sounds like it in all the supermarkets.
Right, but there's no plan to have any kind of freezer capacity installed inside the store, is what you're saying?
They may put a little unit in.
They may, okay.
That's the plan, what they told me.
Okay.
Because we have to put some space for it, maybe put a little space for it.
You want us to see the location electrical?
It would be in this distribution part of it, right there then?
Yes.
That one in there?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there?
Yep.
You may have a freezer or something in there, or...
Well, it's going to be something where you can put a pallet in, right, probably? It's going to be a...
Mike, would you want to look at that? I mean, if they're going to put a freezer or something in there, is that something that you...
Yeah, I was just going to object a little bit, and I've already talked to management, to the town's office, how fit they look or what they're going to do.
Okay. Are you confident then that they'll let you know if they're doing that? Or do we need, do you need it in our motion that they...
Yeah, well, it's perfectly fine that, you know, that in any major appliance or fixtures they're added, we can do that.
Okay, we can put that in the motion that the code enforcement department...
Especially because the first thing they're going to do is see when they're powered. As far as the number of offices, you know. And they have a lot of power, but they generally don't have power where you want it. So, we do want power where you want it, and we don't want extension cords, right? As soon as I follow those guys, I can take some activity, they renovated it right here, and I talked to other portions of the management company. And I don't know if they knew, but they've been very responsive. Several bunch of the different things that we're going to be looking for will be going there, so we can start working on it now. They would save the future some things, and give them a bit of...
They did say that the refrigeration is one ten.
Yeah. Doesn't really matter that much there, what voltage is running on. Still want to see the apparatus.
Yeah, part of it was, was about paddles and things like that, a little bit more secret stuff, but...
Well, if you're confident, we're confident.
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
With the heating spilt that we just had, how long will those trucks be running there at night?
What'd you say about that?
They said they're going to load them right onto the truck and head out with them, because they got to distribute the stuff.
Okay, so...
It's just a hub, that's what it sounds like.
Basically, empty, change trucks and take off?
It sounds like it, and if they are running a lot and we get a complaint, then we'll see that they aren't running a lot.
We're going to just send DOT down, and they'll take care of it.
Again, trucks have been out of that place for a long time.
Yeah, but they weren't...
I would imagine they idled a few times, a few minutes down there, you know, with those, the length of time they were there.
Especially in the winter tunnel incident.
Yeah. And we haven't had any complaints from that, you know, and they're having trucks down there, so...
Well, I think what Steve is getting at is when Tire Warehouse is there, if they came into the truck, they backed it up, shut it off, and they may have stayed there overnight as they worked it. But with a refrigerated truck, it's got to be on all the time. And if it's being loaded into smaller trucks, those have got to be running all the time, and that could be overnight. So, I think that's what he's getting at.
Basically, I'm worried about air quality.
It depends on the trucks. Some trucks do have, have units that run off a battery, it may not run off the diesel.
Yeah, but I'm concerned about air quality if they're not running off a battery. And if they are running off the truck, it's going to affect the quality of the air.
Yeah, like, like Jay said, we have that issue comes up.
So we have to wait for it to happen?
Then we have, we have to go down there and have Mike or DOT go down there and adjust the issue. That's an enforcement issue which this board can't really get into too much.
We can put restrictions on the number of hours that trucks can...
There's already federal restrictions on it.
There's already a law in place, they say that covers that. So, if there's a complaint, goes under that law, and would involve our guys, code enforcement, and it would involve maybe the DOT. But again, if there's a complaint, our system is a complaint-driven system, so... And we haven't had, that I know of, any complaints coming from down there, and I don't know if they bite all night, but if they need to run those trucks for refrigeration, they need to run them for refrigeration, you know, it's stuff that's going to spoil. And they must do it other places as well, you know. As far as delivering frozen foods, they're all delivering to all the supermarkets up in Keene and everywhere else, those refrigerated trucks. Some of them have a small pony motor on them, they run. These might, don't know. I think if we get a complaint, then it's dealt with then.
Can we find out what kind of, you know, what equipment these trucks have in that regard?
We could find out, but I don't think it's a purpose of the board to find that out, you know, if there's a complaint, then there's a complaint.
Yeah, that would be up to code enforcement, if it feels there's an issue there, then it would have to be up to them to find it out. But like I said, there's laws in place, and we can't supersede a law.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one? And there's no one listening online, apparently, I guess. Apparently not, no one else in the public here. So, let's take a look at the second one. And that would be... That's the packaging one, and that's, this is packaging, and what they do is they buy bulk of plumbing supplies, by the looks of it, and they package them into smaller amounts. And at the same location as the building. Let's see. And their hours are 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. They will be employing 12 employees, no customers per day. Use of 12 to 14 existing spaces, parking spaces, that is. Deliveries will be one to two days per week, from Monday through Friday, by tractor-trailer or box truck, and/or both. No changes to the outside lighting, no licenses, and no changes to the sign. So, any questions on that one? Again, it's a, we know where it's going to be in the building, it's going to be a packaging business, and like they say, they're going to take plumbing supplies and put them into smaller packages. And distribute them, do they have their own distribution trucks as well, or what's this one like?
They do not have their own.
So, they break them down, they have a bulk supply come in, put in pallets or something, or on pallets, and then they break them down into smaller ones, and then it's shipped out the same time another load comes in or something?
So they, how this one works is the tractor trailer comes in, like I said, maybe two to three times, gets dropped off, and stays at the bay. And they unload it and redistribute, some of it stays, you know, they get their pallets and stays. And then, I don't know this, like, they deliver it out, assuming FedEx or UPS or something, except I don't know.
So, it doesn't go out in bulk, and, like, it came in in bulk, it does not go in bulk, you think it's going to be FedEx, UPS, and that's it?
Yeah, they just have it and put it back on the truck.
Yeah, I see.
They break it down in small packages.
All right, thanks.
These are all plastic, you know, like plastic PVC fittings.
Is that what they are?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any approval that you get, you'll have to have inspected by the fire department and code enforcement, especially with the PVC in there and that stuff, they have different requirements possibly for that, I don't know. Any questions from the board on this one? No, buddy? So, if we have a motion to approve, we can combine both of these, see how they're...
I also voted that we combined them.
Okay, a motion by Michael York to combine both applications. Is there a second? Seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion?
On the first one, did we put a condition on that? I can't recall.
We hadn't voted on it to approve, we put conditions on them.
Yeah, okay, I'm just...
Yeah, we're just voting to combine them both.
Yeah.
And then, then we can vote on any motions, so... We have a motion by Michael York, seconded by Brandon Self, to combine both the applications, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now, we can, we need a motion to approve, or not, but, and if there are conditions on there, the condition would have to be that code enforcement and fire department inspect the building and the area before they get their CO. And a motion would have to have those two, and any other conditions that we can think of.
Make a motion on the first section, that they would have to have the approval of the fire department and code enforcement.
Combine them both sections, though, right? We're doing both applications, and they both should be inspected by the fire department and code enforcement, so just, the motion will cover them both.
Right. Plan it.
Okay, yeah, just clarifying that. Okay, a motion by Richard Lane to approve with the conditions that they're inspected by the fire department and by code enforcement. Is there a second?
No, certainly not.
Seconded by Michael York, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, you have at it. And you'll have to contact code enforcement when you guys get ready to do something. And the next item on the list is Daniel Lusier, I think, yeah, Lucier or Lusier, but he's not here, by the looks of it, nobody else is here for us. But it looks like what they're looking for is to increase the hours and, let's see, days to...
Days, so...
So let's see, they're in a multi-tenant group to operate retail meet and deli shop at 919 West Swansea Road, right down here. And they want to change, business is approved to operate Wednesday through Sunday, 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. For both hours of operation, to change to would be 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. And that subject property is tax map 71, Lot 11, and that's in the business district. So, everybody remember what this one was, the deli going down there? Former Marlow's, the deli department there. Yes, Mike?
So, who of them not being here, I did, Eric and myself, did go to the property last week to do the CO inspection for it. We're talking about this whole thing of the hours, and basically all that's happened is, is as he's talked to more people about what he's trying to do, he's been getting feedback, and the feedback's like, we went different hours. So that's, that's basically most of the stuff, is that basic?
Yeah. Judging by the business, I'm surprised you didn't go for that right from the beginning. But being on that, how about the inspection of the septic system, did they ever get that?
Yeah, they had done, they had been...
That's all done? Okay, and that was, you saw that?
They approved already, you're right.
Okay, all right. So now we're just down to the hours? Anybody have any objections on that?
I was just thinking that 6:00 a.m. is probably for receiving.
I don't know.
Probably just going to want to make a sign, which is...
Yeah, get stuff ready and prep. Because they still aren't, seating people in there, they eat, and I know, there are seating people in there.
No, no, no.
Just pick them up.
They want to stop like a...
Breakfast sandwich or something.
Yeah, on the way to Keene or somewhere else. And I would imagine, yeah, most of those sort by the minute six. Okay, so, no further discussion on that? So, a motion would be in order?
We'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by Brandon Self to approve the change of hours and days of operation, seconded by Michael York, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so, got it extended. Now, that brings us to a discussion with Mr. Jasmine on wetlands septic setback discussion. And the board is discussing that, and everybody remembers, we're talking about possibly putting on the warrant, next year's zoning warrant change, a change from the 125-foot setback for a, to a wetlands, changing to the 75-foot setback to the wetlands for, this is for a septic system.
So I attended this Monday's town meeting, it was really good, good meeting.
Mike, would you come closer, it'd be easier for me to hear, you kind of echo me way back there. I appreciate it, thank you. This is no...
So, at the con-con meeting Monday, Beverly and Jane were there. I think I'm correct in saying, this is a good discussion about the whole thing. And basically, what we both had come up to, and one of the things I really appreciated, especially, you know, Sherry Domena's leadership has been fantastic, is it's not really two sides, it's, you know, two dimensions, and viewing these two dimensions. And what we both really came to the conclusion of, that neither one of us, or neither one of the dimensions, has any real why. We looked at the report that the original 125 was on, and Sherry agrees that there's not a whole lot there, I agree there's not a whole lot there. And we're trying to work with the state and other folks to try to figure out, okay, 75, where'd 75 come from? So what we both decided was, that we're both going to spend more time trying to come up with the how did that dimension come to be? What, who came up with it and why? What's the math, what's the science, the science, most importantly, behind it? Because we want whatever decision we make to be based in some level of fact. I think, from what I talk to most of the septic designers and everything, I've got, I've got plenty of, of, yeah, this is good, people I know, people I trust, but I can't point to anything and say, yeah, right there, that's what they did, they did this over 10 years, and that's why that's a good number. So, what we decided to do is we were going to ask the planning board's permission to just give us a little bit more time to try to come up, so that when we do come up with whatever it is, it's based on something substantive versus just our opinions.
It seems how we're starting early, got plenty of time to look into that.
Yeah.
But the thing that comes up to me is that it probably isn't a one-size-fits-all. You know, the soils in Swansea are different from soils in, even Keene, some places in Keene, and the surrounding towns and stuff. So, those towns there, you might even be able to have a septic system 10 feet from wetland and nothing would happen, depending on what you got for clay in the soil and that type of stuff. In Swansea, we got a lot of sand there, it's good for filtering, and it'll go down and not necessarily out, but still, might be further away, so... So, the number that you get from somebody, I wonder, should it come from a soil scientist, you know, if the planning board asked, asked a soil scientist?
Well, that discussion was had.
It was.
Can I interject something? Because the, what the, what Sherry Domena decided to do in relation to that, Mike, that you just spoke, speaking about, Jeff Littleton is doing an analysis for the conservation commission, and they decided to be more specific with him, so that he would look at soils and kind of come up with some data around what actually exists in Swansea, in terms of soil.
And who is he?
And he is the...
He owns Moosewood Ecological.
And he's a engineer...
He's an ecological engineer.
Ecological engineer, what exactly is that, anybody know?
So they would be looking at seasonal changes to wetlands, you know, where, where you can actually designate this as a designated wetland versus something that's only seasonal, that only comes once in a while? Soils, type of soils, what was the other side?
I don't have it with me, but he is doing a phase two of our natural resources study.
I worked with Jeff for a lot of years, several lifetimes before this one, actually. Think very highly of the knowledge he always brought. We did talk a little bit about that, and I tend to agree. But even among, even in Swansea, the soils do change, and the conditions do change. And I got a little squeamish about just overcomplicating, you know. If we could find, again, data that said, okay, with this sort of thing, because as you know, every single, every single septic system designer's put in, they, they would have to see where the soils are, and that's, that's the whole design at the beginning of the plan right there, is where the soils are. It just, it just seemed like it could grow into a big, kind of cumbersome thing. But I, I agree, and it's one of the reasons that I think the 125-foot is overkill here for most places, because it's beach sand. I mean, there's a lot of this town, and you can dig and not find anything living in the data. It's almost problematic when digging foundationals, because you have to, you can't overdig the hole, but you have to dig the site so damn wide, and it makes working that be pretty darn difficult. So, I like where we were going, I like the fact that they're going to have Jeff work on that, that's great. I know he's already, he's already going to be doing a lot of other things for them. Like I said, I think he's a very, very smart, very knowledgeable man. But again, anything that Jeff does, he's going to do, it's science-based, it's going to be because of this, and there's some evidence to that. And that's, I think that's what ultimately we need to know, because when people ask you about... when people ask you about 125 foot, why? There isn't a good answer, sorry, there just isn't, not, not, not for people who designed, engineered these things, the answer isn't good, it's not good enough. Now, I can find plenty of other things from this university and that university that will support a, a bigger dimension, I can find plenty that will support a smaller dimension. But I still go to the fact that if you've got a septic system, it can be within two feet of seasonal groundwater, two feet of seasonal groundwater. Going 125 feet away, especially when you can have a parking lot right for the wetland, I can have a house right for the wetland, I can have anything I want right for the wetland, but I can't have the septic system, the most engineered piece on that whole darn house. The biggest problem with septic systems, and something that they've done in the Lakes region and other places to help solve this, is when they fail, and they don't get repaired. Now, septic system, like anything else, working like it's supposed to, is perfectly fine. The moment it fails, that's when you have a dilemma. And, and some of those communities, they've worked together with other agencies to come up with funds, where they help people put money toward the septic system.
Well, then, we probably shouldn't be designating the distance just because the thing might fail.
Right.
They're all gonna fail at some point, but just because it might fail.
Absolutely.
It's not good science either.
It's not, especially when, when, when you've got, you've got, you know, people who insist on having a lawn that looks like a golf course on a lake. I know how they did that. And I'm not worried about the septic system over there, I'm worried about everything they dumped into the lake.
Can you tell us about the process? Cause you, this, the, it's the, the situation, what is the process when a waiver is necessary? And the reason I ask that is, it seemed like from what you were saying the other day, uh, is that homeowners or engineers design septic systems for homeowners, and they can't meet the 125 P., so they have to request a waiver. Is a waiver automatically granted?
There's no waiver system.
There is no waiver system.
There's no waiver system, they have to get a variance from us.
A variance, okay.
From ZVA.
From the ZVA, okay.
So we just have.
It's internal, it's internal.
Yeah, 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 we just had on a couple of ZVA, the last ZVA meeting, this young man's been working on this, this property deal now for almost two years, he's spent a lot of money on it, on Witten Road, got a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of engineering, and he could get to 70, 80 feet, that's the furthest way he could get. And if that bleach field were to bleach, it would bleach downhill, and it would bleach away from the wetland, and he was denied. So the whole project's done, until if the system can get resolved, he's not, he's not the last one. And it just, it just, it just strikes me, I mean, right now, a lot of the, I, I heard a phrase the other day that, it's not the nicest phrase, and, and I, I hope it doesn't upset anybody, but a lot of the dirt guys, one of the dirt guys came up with this, he said, right now, he says, the lots I'm working on, he says, they're the cream of the crop. He says, that's what's left. And when we think about the lots that have been selling in town, Eaton Road, with Eaton Road subdivision comes to my mind, and lots, planning board did a great thing when they did that subdivision, in making sure that all of those driveways were engineered. It was, for that time in planning board history, it was a pretty stringent thing to do, but they knew what that hillside was, and it's soap, that's what it is. And those lots sat for sale for how long? And it's only in this market that people finally decide, okay, that, that, that's where we are. I mean, they're spending, they're spending 70, 80 M to put in a traffic light. And remind the septic and the rest of it, one was had to get a variance, he got a variance, barely by the skin of his teeth. And the problem is, is, is that like over on Wickham Road, the other development, one of the other developments that's been most recent in LA, is this, the old downhill property that you know where they're, they're well. So that, in order to make that 125-foot setback, they had to get more mountains crossed, they put in much more driveway, they disturbed much more land, it's not gonna get, who knows what dumped on it all the way along, to accommodate that additional septic. It doesn't seem like it's meeting its goal of protecting.
Can I just interject? I need to interject, because Michael Branley asked me to do a review of all of these ZVA variances for this very subject back to, to 2020. And with the exception of the one instance that Michael was talking about, because I wasn't there at that meeting, every one of those was granted.
Not really.
There was one denial, and that, and that, during, if you let me finish.
Yeah.
They were, the ones that were granted were because, were because, was because there was absolutely no other place, they were mostly around Wilson-Hawn or Swansea Lake, and there was no other place for these property owners to put their septic system. And so the ZVA, in fairness, so that people can continue to use their homes, granted the variance, and that was, there were five or six of them in that times period, period from 2020 to 2023, except for the one that Michael was talking, there was also a denial in that same group that I was, that I researched, and the denial was based on the fact that there was one section of the property where a septic system could be placed, that would, would be in keeping with the 125 setback. It was further away from the house, and it would be more costly for the owners to put that in, which is, you know, is a consideration, obviously, how much it's gonna cost them. And it was denied based on the fact that there was a location to place the septic system on that property, and still would stay within the 125. Now, ZVA is looking at the ordinance, that's the ordinance they're working with.
Yeah.
They've no, can't, can't change that.
That's, that's a good decision, though. If there is a place on it, even though it's more costly, that is a good decision.
That's what they thought, that's what, right, exactly.
Can you scroll back up, you were reviewing these, uh, ZVA variances between the years of 2020?
2020 and the present.
And the present, and how many of them were there that were requested?
I can't remember the exact number, there were probably, I wanna say five or six.
I got the list, I got the list.
Five to six, okay, no, I've just ballparked, I just, you know, bigger than a bread box.
Oh, buddy, I do.
I sent it to Julius, I sent the list to Julius.
The hard work that guy's put in, I do.
And you probably made a printout of it.
So, like, three years, it was five to six over three, three years.
Fairly small number, yeah. And they, and they were all granted for, for Swansea Lake.
These were all from Swansea Lake?
Um, I think there might have been one from Wilson-Hawn.
Why is Wilson-Hawn gonna have a septic?
And they're now?
No, back in 2020, they did too.
It may have been all from Swansea Lake, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Julius has the list, so.
Actually, just pull up a list.
And just gave it, just gave it to.
Was this new construction or failed old systems?
It, I don't recall, all I had was the re-variant, came coming from the variants.
They were all, they were all new construction, renovation, renovation miles, because, so if, if, there's one that's out of compliance, non-conforming from the distance.
Yeah.
And it's failed.
Yeah.
And they, they can't put it anywhere else.
Right.
I or Pam go out, and we look at it and make sure it's failed, verify it's failure, and then we have to write a letter that basically says, it's someplace else, put this thing, and they can put it back.
Yes, Swansea Lake is tough, there's not many places to put anything there.
And it's, I'll tell you that, it's not just Swansea Lake, I've got this all over the place. Um, but yeah, the water makes it always harder. But when they renovate something through the state law, when you renovate your house with certain amount of law and this, that stuff, that kicks in a lot of septic stuff. And that's usually how they end up needing the variance. Or they need it because, one of them on Swansea Lake, it got the variance because it was only two bedroom, we have, we mandate three. Um, so they want to mandate nine. So, yeah, but like I say, I mean, the technologies now are so much better, the, 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 the best practices are so much better. Um, I, myself, have had, you know, I have a living hell when it comes to septic systems when I bought my house, and the first time it failed, I needed to put on the bedroom, I needed to update the, the, the septic, and they pulled it out, and it was, I don't know, a 34 Chevy, maybe a 35, but that's what they'd use for the tank, what's left of it. And that was the other, it was a tri- well. Then, I had an ocean system, and then that failed. And then I got a press speed system, and then that failed. Now I've got a clean solution system, made 25 grand. So I have put about 36,000, $37,000 in septic in the 25 years I lived in that house. So it's a subject near, near my heart, um, nobody brags about the septic at parties, but, um.
Except for you.
Except for me. But I, I, but I really appreciated, I really appreciated CONCON's approach to this, and their desire to make sure that whatever we do, we do is based on something substantive that we can look at and go, okay.
I'm, I'm curious too, I, Scott, I know you and I were on the planning board when we initiated that 125-foot setback, and I, in the foggy recesses of my mind, I can't remember, was it, was that initiated by the conservation commission at that point?
Yeah, that's where it came from, conservation commission, and anytime it came up that we wanted to put it back down to the 75, it was generally over read, overruled rather by the, yeah, conservation commission. But, you know.
Was it, was that based on, on offer for concerns? Did you remember what the reasoning was?
It was just the pollution of the wetlands is what it was.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you can, if you can put a well, you're drinking well within 75 feet of your septic system, that must tell you something. I mean, you're, you're saying 125 feet from wetland, but you're drinking well 75 feet from that septic tank, and you're drinking out of it.
Or less, or less with a waiver.
Sometimes less, yeah, with a waiver less. But I mean, that's something that you gotta look at, say, well, and there are plenty like that, so, if it's safe enough for that, it's probably safe enough with the wetland, unless you can find something that it says is not.
You get the lots that are, eh, less than an acre, people can have a problem.
True, but I'm, I'm just saying about, you know, pollution in wells and things like that, always getting sick from that.
Yeah.
Mike, you were saying that you couldn't find any scientific proof for 125?
I said I haven't found anything yet.
Okay, have you found anything supporting 75?
I haven't found anything supporting anything definitive, especially for New Hampshire. I have found plenty of really good studies, but I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna use something, even though it would make my case for me from University of Missouri.
But if it's a state red, wouldn't the state?
Well, that would be my theory, and that's why I'm really trying hard to get from the state where they, where, where they're getting it. Right now, the state is so, so, so woefully understaffed. Um, questions like this are not on the top of their list.
I'll bet you. The 75 foot that's in our laws came out of weeks of discussion in the House of Representatives on, I, I can't think of the name, it's a resources and recreation or something like that committee, and they've gone over and over and over this, and there'd be like 15 of them around the table, and they finally decided on 75 feet, and it passed.
I wonder if you did check that.
That's probably, you're probably right, that's probably exactly.
Well, the, 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 the number that I, the number that, the person I called is Bridget Mark, and, and Bridget, he's got one of the greatest names, Addison Bridgely Mark, is the guy who created the AOT, Alteration of Fairness.
That's, that's him.
He's the guy who did it, and he still runs that department, and he's an absolute wealth of information, who's on vacation. So I have.
Smart guy.
I have left, I have left him, and I left him an email and, and a, and a phone message, he's very, very good to talk to, he's very good with his time, I'm gonna be done next week myself, and I'm, I'm thinking that if there's anyone in CONCON that has any recollection of how that happened, there's a really good chance he's that, that person, and I'm hoping that he calls me and tells me exactly how I get to the, then that number is not unique to New Hampshire by any stretch.
And they probably checked what they would do in the after state.
If you do any amount of research, and I can tell you, if you're having a hard time sleeping, it's a great thing to do, but, um, that number comes up a lot.
For Mark?
75.
And we did.
Oh yeah, all over the place.
That does.
Places that have rules, because.
Probably has to be.
Probably was.
Yeah, sometimes.
Still using our house and main, so.
25.
Still using our house and main, yeah.
25.
So, anyway, we're.
All right.
Thank you, very.
But that's, but that's what, that's what we wanna do, and I was really glad that, that, that it wasn't a big emotional thing or anything like that, it was like, we should figure out why any of these numbers really matter, because we don't know.
Yeah, good.
Thanks for taking that.
Good, Mike, that was a bottom comment.
Well, I appreciate Beverly's help again, it was really nice her to go through that and, and take the time to do that, and, and the rest, and your request was terrible, like I said, we need to work on that. Okay?
Next one?
All right, guys.
Okay, zoning amendments discussion continued, and I think it's basically a recap of what we did at the last meeting, about the zoning amendments, and they are in the back of the packet. And we're just pretty much, yeah, pretty much confirming what we did last week there. Yeah, like remove self-storage facilities as permitted by special exception in the business district. Let's see, so, now, now that was done, I think Sarah explained that, that was because it's taking up valuable industrial land or business land and stuff, and, and I agree, it does take it up a lot, but we only allow it in one other place, and that's in the village, no, actually, it's an industrial park, it's self-storage, we allow it in industrial park there. And we allow storage facility in business district two, which is mainly the mill complex, and that's it, that's district two, I think, down there. So, do we want to allow it in another part of town like rural ag? For instance, I'm just asking, we have to allow someplace, and if we leave it industrial park, then we're still using up valuable industrial space as well.
Yeah, but they're not really filling up the industrial park very fast.
No, they sure aren't, no.
We allow housing to be industrial.
Oh yeah, a lot of stuff is allowed in there, I'm just going over this one, if we remove this one from there, we'll have one other.
Wait outside, I'll get with you.
Yes.
Have you ever been up to Langton and seen, um, seen, uh, I mean, the chicken parrot?
Hubbard.
Hubbard's, Hubbard's, you ever seen their, their chicken parrots?
Mm-hmm.
Not the new ones, only walk.
You would, doesn't matter, new or, I can tell you right now, if you tried by them, you will not know that they're chicken parrot, you will not know there's chickens, you will not know there's anything breathing in there.
Right, because it's all biosecurity, you know, water soup, when you walk anywhere near it.
It looks just like self-storage. It's just a bunch of long metal buildings, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just, I mean, if somebody moved in with 800 hogs, it would look the same.
You mean here is what you're saying? Or up there, Hubbard's?
Anywhere, but neither way, I mean, it's just, they're just long metal buildings.
That's how they do it.
Look, I'm not a huge fan of the self-storage thing either, I get it, and I, I talked to Scott about it when we were touring Perry Lane there.
So your, your point, Scott, is that we need to have, that that use needs to be permitted in multiple districts?
And bringing up to the board that if we take it from business, which is fine, but if we take it from business, that means there's only one other place in the town where we're allowing that storage, and that's in the commercial industrial.
And the downside of that is?
Um, I don't know, is there a downside? Maybe not.
Kind of an awful ass.
What, what are some units that give us for property taxes?
Self-storage is better than. Probably not much.
Okay, to a regular business.
Better than the apartment. They don't, uh, they don't require much for infrastructure.
No.
Not much for power, not much for water.
No.
No sewer, nothing like that.
No jobs.
No, but, which again, is why I brought up, Victoria, about possibly allowing special exception or, you know, make special exception in the rural ag, because they don't require any of that same type of stuff that a business does, you know, the sewer, the water, the larger, like, you call three-phase, they can run on a single phase. Something to consider. Anybody else have a thing on that one before we move on along?
They're ugly.
Pardon me?
They're ugly.
They're ugly, yeah, they are. Let's see, add retail EV charging stations, yeah, as a use by right in business district and commercial industrial district, and that's probably a good idea if they wanna put them in, should be allowable use. And amend that rear lot ordinance to include, include the provisions for ADUs, which conflict, had conflicted with the RSA 674. And amend that rear lot ordinance to include, include the provisions for ADUs, which conflict, had conflicted with the RSA six, seven, four. Let's see, next one was duplex, duplex permitted by right for existing structures in the Business District, which to me, again, is, is fine, you know, the house is there, you wanna turn it into a duplex, same footprint, in my opinion, anyway. Uh, move description of village visiting, oh, that was just a clerical thing to do there. Let's see, and we discussed these setbacks, and we're still discussing the setbacks, so. The rest is just showing how it would appear in the zoning ordinance, really impressive, our factory. So if there are no changes to that, we can just use those recommendations as we head into our discussions on zoning later on in the season. Then we will use them like that.
On the twenty-third?
Uh, yeah, the twenty-third, so yeah, that's, we probably won't get to it on the twenty-third, yeah, we're a little bit more than on the twenty-third. But that twenty-third meeting, that ought to be, you know, an interesting meeting as far as educational for, maybe for us, and probably for the homeowners around there too. Because as we discussed, we're gonna be deciding whether it should be Business District One, maybe, or leave it alone as business, or put it all to residential. And we've all been up there, and it's pretty much residential now on most of it area, there, residences up there. And what's allowed on their property and what they've got up there are two different things, except for the airport, that area there, you know, that's, it's a little different over there. So could go either way, we'll see what the property owners think about it, whether some of them would prefer their properties to remain business, or whether they'd all like it, maybe try to zone it residential down there and forget about Business District One.
Have you received, anyone else, anybody to, to fill the letter?
No.
I haven't gotten one.
No.
So you have to send it along?
Yes.
Because I, I think, I noticed in the minutes that the meeting's gonna be noticed, so we are noticing it, and we are, because we have sent out a letter.
Yeah, Sarah sent out a letter right before she left, so I came in on Tuesday, and it already been mailed. I think, I, I agree, I'm shocked that I had to-
I talked, I talked to one of the homeowners who I talked to routinely about a lot of different things, I said, you're gonna get this letter, that's what it's about, because you might, you know, no matter how, how, well, you try to explain it, though, sometimes, you know.
I've got one sample.
And he's one of the business owners too, so, you know, so make sure you understood the whole thing, you know. And, um, yeah, so.
So I think she referenced a, a website or our website, the town's website, to, so they can see what's allowed and what isn't, because, nine towns out of ten, the people don't know what's allowed on their property. They don't know what you can develop, or what your neighbor can develop, or anything like that, and you're just, you're living your life, you've got your house, and you don't even think about it until something like that comes up, so it's gonna be an eye-opener for a lot of those people if they do check the website out, so.
Julius, could you even help add that letter to us, just so you know?
You can have this one right now, and now I'll know after.
So that's an opportunity to explain to them a little bit about the zoning and stuff that we do here, and what it would impact them and how it would work.
Looking at most of those houses lining thirty-two, I don't think there's a hundred feet frontage on fifty percent of them.
No, I don't think there's-
Yeah, because those are really old homes.
So they would have, you know, if somebody wanted, you know, if they, they leave it alone, someone's gonna have to make multiple purchases of homes in order to bring a business in there.
Unless they got the variance for an existing property, but if that lot doesn't have, say, a hundred-foot frontage, the lot clearly isn't big enough to put a whole heck of a lot on anyway, so they would have to do something like that.
That's why, that's why I would think that they would definitely wanna keep it as a residential situation with the grandfathered.
Now they're required a hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yes.
So, yeah, bringing down the residential, um, Business District One, I think, is a hundred feet, but they're-
But yeah, but if we convert it to, if they convert it to residential, everything is grandfathered.
That's there.
Existing, yes, and, and I think we meant, or brought that up to Mark, that, um, anything that is a business there now, like the veterinary clinic, or anything like that, would be grandfathered in. And if they were to leave that facility and nothing new came in within a two-year, or after a two-year period, it would revert to residential. That's, that's my understanding.
That was written, I'm not sure how that's-
I think that's how it goes.
You'd be right.
Yeah, I, I'd like so.
If they wanted to expand it, they'd have to have a variance for it. My understanding on it, if it goes back to residential, any of those properties there that would fall into that zone, that are business.
I think the businesses that are there now are low-impact, they're, they're good for the community, they're good for the neighborhood. Anything that would go in under Village District Home would take just a little bit back. I mean, they're still gonna be basic, simple. We got an accountant, we got a veterinary clinic, we've got the man who makes the, uh, the, the gizmos that you blow into it, you got a DUI before you can start your car up, you got a plumber, um, you got a mason.
Restaurant.
Yeah, well, the restaurant, I mean, the, the business businesses, yeah, you have the restaurant, that, that whole thing that Mr. Shakur owns.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, they're, they're all just low-impact, making evidence, being held.
Yep, and they're on Route thirty-two, which is why that Business District is there, because it's Route thirty-two, you know, higher traffic in that area rather than sticking out in the rest of the town, that's one reason why it's like that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, bringing it down to Business District One would certainly cut a lot of the stuff out of there that people that are, and I can't blame them, wouldn't wanna see next door.
And, and at this point, you'd have to buy five, six less to even begin to make anything worth a week.
Yeah, and let's see, they're also proposing the reduction in density down to six, maybe, I think it was, I think it was six.
Yes.
Yeah, bring it down to six, and so the eight, yeah. And what is it, it's three in residential zone, I think, yeah, three per, per one and a half acres. So anyway, yeah, that'll be, we can't discuss too much of it now because we got that meeting coming up, but.
Do you think if you looked at the zone that's in the town zoning now, I would miss how it-
Yeah, we just have it on the table there?
Yeah, yeah, to think that would, I don't know if that's the level of people.
To have at that meeting.
Do you want a fad, do you want a projector, or how interactive is the thing?
You know, I don't know if people would even care, but it's, it does kind of put some perspective in a way for-
Yeah, always does.
The nerves, I don't know if we need to, are you, or?
It's always good to look at that map, you know, they'll-
Having a visual is always a good thing rather than trying to-
We don't need it in the whole town for that area, you know, maybe a larger one of that specific area. There are gonna be a lot of questions, again, just because people don't realize what can actually go up on their lot, or what they could do with it.
But whatever we need tax back, we bring it here for Planning or something, and we can certainly get you a zoning map if it could be yours.
A zoning map could be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be good, take note of it.
Sure. Get one of those.
Right, gotcha. Let's see, anything else on that subject, or any other subject, actually, I think we've come to the end here, so we have, any other business required?
We have two public hearings for the next meeting, uh, Webb and one fifteen Bay Soil Road.
Oh yeah, okay, so Webb is coming up, we remember Webb there, on Route thirty-two there, they've come back to plans, and they're over at the Town Hall in case anybody wants to look at it.
Twenty-five is the day after, especially.
Yeah.
Yes, the day after, especially. And so on to it.
What's the one fifteen?
It's storage, so they're going to, if you remember, down that way, uh, there is, you go to the lot, there is an old storage on the right-hand side. But based on Rogue right-hand side, we drive towards Bean Storage there, they own going left. If you're like looking at the storage there, there's a field along the side, it used to be a farm field of sorts. That area right there, they wanna expand and put two thirty-six thousand square foot, uh, storage areas focused for industrial use. So basically, people like plumbers can leave their stuff there in the storage stalls, uh, go there, show up, grab their stuff, you know, you, that's the intent.
Crucial storage, they're gonna be elevated.
Different, this is a different district from what we've been, what we've done before, this, this one is a little unique in the fact that it is, as Julie has said, that, um, business owners will be, be, uh, that will be their business, really, you know, they'll be working out of the truck, but that will be their business, that storage area there. So there's gonna be a septic system with it according to the plans, plans over Town Hall in case anyone else will get it. Septic system is gonna go well over there. Uh, loading docks, loading docks there, or maybe four.
Gonna be ground level.
Well, they're just overhead doors.
We haven't, they haven't received elevation yet, did we get elevation yet? No, there aren't any elevations, we can see the site line as it's played out, but I don't really know what the building is like for elevation. That's right, yeah, and they are gonna subdivide that lot, and when they subdivide it, they've drawn the lines so that the driveway that goes to the existing storage facility will be on their property, so we'll have to make sure that, that, that easement is granted. For those people on the storage, which is that, I think that's the line they have, you know, but any of those drawings are good to look at. The wet ones, or a big set of drawings over there, if you've got time to take a look at them, we'll have a piece of it. Yeah, well, that, that stuff is great to look at, though.
They're also gonna, they're also gonna subdivide it, so that the current storage is one lot, the new thing is a, is a new lot. It's gonna be an interesting thing, there's a lot of, you know, questions, potential conditions, it's gonna be a shitless, it's stacked, it's stacked.
It's ten acres total, we said it will be a larger half, three will be a smaller half, fitting just barely above the requirements. Yeah, we'll put together a nice formal amount of four.
Good.
If it's going to be industrial storage, why, why wouldn't they, well, commercial- Okay, but still, why, if you're going to be doing something that scale, why would you not want to have raised dock area, overhead door, but still live?
There are two loading docks, or four loading docks, aren't there?
I don't remember.
There are two on each, looking at, look to me.
You talking about Webb or you talking about the storage?
No, talking about storage, you're talking about Webb?
No.
Talking about the storage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are loading docks there, and there's a septic system going in there, and there's a well going in there, so there'll be water and septic there, so some of them might use like a little office or something in there, I don't know.
Yeah, you gotta know a lot more about it.
We have to, yeah, we need to investigate. So you wouldn't be able to back up like a bigger box truck to it and load or unload something? It looks like on just the ends, we haven't gotten elevation yet, to see what it looks like, it looks like on the ends of the buildings, they have loading docks there, and there must be some common way they've got designed, we don't know yet.
There's, there's a lot that I, I don't know, that I couldn't really make any.
But it sounds like a great idea, I mean, it's a unique idea, so open to, to look at, for sure.
I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of tradesmen who have been beating the bushes for a lot, or a place to go.
Yeah.
Especially when you are an electrician, you have a rhythm, or like, you want, you can't have your own business again.
But, and you come home at the end of the day with all the extra wire, and what do you do with it, right?
What do you do with it? And then if you're growing, and you get three or four more vans, and everybody's driving curio, so you're driving wherever they're driving. And so they have this, then these are all just, these are all part of the, of the, you know, they say they wanna talk too much about it because, because it's not in front of us, but there's a lot to talk about with this, it's, it's, it could be really cool for a lot of guys, it's a lot of, it's a lot of units.
Yeah.
A lot of units.
And the Conservation Commission made note of their concerns, so they'll be, they'll be coming to, we have that, so the Planning Board will have their concerns at that meeting.
Yeah, they were good in few, but frankly, but I doubt she got even more accurate in ultimate, but we'll see. But I think I'm balancing the variables.
Yeah, yeah, something to look at, for sure. So we got those two coming up, those what? Uh, public hearings, and we got the zoning one day before that, so we'll be busy.
Busy week next week, I know.
Pardon me?
It'll be a busy week next week.
Busy week, yeah, it's the week after next.
The week after, yeah.
Got the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so we got a week to catch up on that stuff. Anybody have anything else for the meeting tonight, Julius, anything for you?
Nope, I think that should do it.
All right, great.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion for adjourn to adjourn, is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah, two and a half hours to drive.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I had to get this thing on, those opposed, and we're adjourned.